All right, five school board basics. Number one, put students first. Number two, follow the law and your own policy. Number three, respect the chain of command. Number four, base decisions on shared objective information. And number five, operate in the public eye. Moving on to the consent agenda items. Kendra did have one additional sheet that she handed out. If there were any questions, comments?
There's one question that I had and I just was wondering, I talked to Jamie today, but I think it would be good if you would just kind of reiterate the, as I was going through the expenses, I noticed there was a larger than usual amount for science. So I just wondered if that was stuff that had been requisitioned earlier and you give a better explanation than what I could try to report.
Well, thank you. So the science department is on curriculum rotation this year. And each year we budget a certain amount for, when we make the line item budget in the fall, we budget a certain amount for the department that's on curriculum review for the year. The past couple of years, English was on the review. Last year they spent somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The year before that was math. They spent around eighty thousand dollars. And that's textbooks and other supplies needed to administer their curriculum. And if they decide to go with a new curriculum, that's new curricular materials. So science is on the rotation this year. And in their proposals, they have one grade level of textbooks, which is third grade. Other than that, it's supplies that they, that they replace every time they're on curriculum rotation. So their total amount is going to be around thirty thousand. And so they're, they're well under the budget that we would allow for curriculum materials for the following year. Those things get purchased in the year that they're on review, before June 30, so that they can be used the following school year. When departments make requisitions for the following year, just for general supplies that they would normally get, those are all ordered to be here after July 1st, so that they're paid for out of the new budget. So normal requisitions are still happening and those will be moving forward for everybody for next year. But science is on that curriculum review for this year. And so they'll be well under budget for curricular needs for the next five years until they come back on. Any other comments, questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Kent's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed saying, motion carried. Moving on to item number four, visitors, public forum. Is there anyone here to speak during the public forum? All right.
Jamie, is this where we, I mean, you got us down?
You have a, you have a specific item in the discussion items coming up.
All right, moving on to item five, administrative reports. First, the principals, Mr. DeZale.
So yeah, heading kind of the general school information. I realize I have a typo in there, put in there that parent teacher conferences were held the week of March 6th, which was false, they were last week, the week of March 13th. I think I was thinking to today and thinking last week, but actually worked on this last week and so put the week before, so I apologize. The feedback I received there was positive, that teachers continue to relish and really take advantage of the opportunities we have and that are given to make positive connections and make any connections with families and parents. We realize that that relationship is so critical to the success of students and schools. And so that was definitely a benefit for us. Other things we're kind of working for is we're working kind of on our schedule for next year. It's hard to imagine that we're in our final quarter of this year. So we're looking forward to schedules, we're looking forward to continuing to tweak, as I wrote in here, our MTSS process. MTSS is the multi-tiered system of supports. What we're putting in place, our processes that we're putting in place to support all students and all staff, specifically those who are struggling and how we can help them and look at interventions and some of those kind of things. So those, those are the conversations that we're having that are ongoing and we look to continue to steer the ship in the right direction. Our PD has been removed, as you all know, for the lost instructional time. And so we really haven't had a dedicated PD. Our staff is busy with their flex hour time as they're continuing to work on things that will make them better teachers and continue to hone in on their crafts as they do all the time during those professional development opportunities. So we're thankful for those flex times. Coach Lindsay Helmers has done a great job, our instructional coach, of sharing resources and finding podcasts and webinars and some of those kind of things. And so I just appreciate the help and the work that she's putting in there for the pre-K through six staff specifically. And then on there is kind of the attend, well, for the board goals, the attendance. The February 15th is not on there, that was our first full day of school due to the lost instructional time. And so I mean, I'd gladly, I'm assuming we don't report on those moving forward since those are now instructional time versus professional development time. But I know Mr. DeZale talked about that a little bit in his report as well. But so that's kind of where I cut mine off there, so.
All right, any other questions for Kent? All right, thank you, Mr. DeZale.
Yeah, like Kent said, high school and middle school PT conferences went well. I didn't get around to everyone by the time I was going to do that. We actually didn't have school on Thursday. So I did get back to everyone on the attendance, but the little that I saw, usually we have less people come in the spring than we do in the fall typically. But I would say the few that I talked to thought it was a little bit higher this spring than last year. I don't know why, but you know, hit or miss. And then the other item I was going to talk about is an agenda item later with our credit recovery classes. So that's why I kind of kept that short with everything that's going on tonight. Our PD has been removed for the remainder of the year, as you know. Up to this time recently, probably in the last month, what we focused on more is the plans for the makeup time and the stuff that Lindsay and Katie worked really hard on to provide some options. And then we kept missing more days and more days and stuff. And so being flexible and working through that, do the volume of hours worked and allowing them to get some flexibility with that. And so yes, on the bottom with the board goals, the professional development, I put that on there as well. The attendance through the 22nd and overall, but I won't complete the Wednesdays anymore because it wouldn't be really true, because we're not doing PD on those days since we're continuing in school. The middle school intervention has continued with the intervention schedule and I have an attachment. Do you have that up, Mr. Craig? The thing that I wanted to point out on there is if you scroll to the bottom, I think it's on here, percentage of students exited from intervention recently. We've had a fairly strong number, a handful of seventh and eighth graders, and I think there's a sixth grader involved in that as well, that's been staying above the trend line and so they were removed and everything. So I think that's something to celebrate and shows that the kids are working hard. So that's the main reason I put that on there, just to show that there are kids that after being tested, tested have been exited. And remember, this is kids that aren't normally in special ed, they're not, or other services, but maybe have been below their peers that have been pointed to that program. So that's all I had with that. Attendance is as is, it's been much better lately. I was, the one reason I commented on the February one was because I was shocked it was lower than January because I thought we did far better in February. So then you look back and it came to, I think, two days, we had the bug hit us hard and I think we had, now I don't even remember, five or six staff out both days. So if you take that into account, actually, the month was really good. But I had to look that up myself because I was questioning it, because I'm like, I haven't made many subcalls this month. But yeah, we had a lot out on a few days when everyone was getting hit, so that's all I have for right now.
All right, any comments or questions for Mr. DeZale? All right, Mr. Craig?
The big thing going on right now is principal applications and the interview process as we're getting ready to hire a new secondary principal. The position's closed yesterday, so we have stopped taking applications. We've had fifteen applications, which is great. We are, the admin team, Stan, Kent and I, made some reference calls today and we are going to interview four finalists next Monday, March 27th. Those committed, the committees are being established for that. We have some parents that were invited from the PSYAC committee. Laurel and Kristen are going to sit on that group, as well as a couple of community members. We have a teacher group that's going to interview. And then the administrative group is going to interview. We're trying to get a couple of students to lead tours, to walk the candidates around the facility and interact in that way. I'm going to play host for the evening, so that somebody's kind of organizing what's going on. So we have things well in hand for next Monday night to do those interviews. So hopefully we'll have a candidate next week. After tonight's meeting also, I don't have this on my report here, but assembly will be made public after this meeting. Well, tomorrow, I'll, I'll be calling our representative to give her the updated policies that we're going to look at tonight. And then things will be updated and ready to be made public. So that will be an exciting thing and finally getting that done. So I'm looking forward to that. That's all I have.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Craig? Thank you. Moving down to board committee, policy, finance and facilities.
So the policy committee met last week to review policies for tonight's meeting. The finance committee also met last week to work on negotiations. Facilities committee has not met.
All right. Item D, recognition of excellence.
There's a lot this month. And so I wish Ava was here, but I'll read, read through these. As far as our winter sports awards, we had a lot of things going on, of course. We congratulate the girls' basketball team on reaching the semifinals of the state tournament, an incredible accomplishment. There are several individual participants that earned top awards at the end of the season. Madison Brower was named academic all-conference, first team all-conference, all-region team, all-district team, first team all-state, first team all-review. The girls and the Girls High School Athletic Association State Championships Class II A All-Tournament Team. Marissa Ackerman received academic all-conference, second team all-conference, all-region team, all-district team and second team all-review. Bria Wazman was academic all-conference, second team all-conference and third team all-review. Jayden Jensen and Elena Wingate were academic all-conference. Zoe Ackerman and Sam Chambers were both honorable mention all-conference. Jonathan Krogman was first team at-large. Michael Block was first team all-conference and Dawson Byer qualified for the state tournament and was second team all-conference. The team awards for academic performance, receiving an excellence in academics award was the boys' basketball team and the basketball cheerleaders. Distinguished academic award went to the girls' basketball team, our wrestlers and our dance team. In speech, Saturday, March 11th, nine Sibley O'Chedin speech students traveled through the snowy weather to participate in the state individual speech contest in Fort Dodge, Iowa. Out of the twelve performances, seven received a division one excellent rating and five received a division two good rating. Receiving a division one rating were Garrett Atherton for solo musical theater entitled Confrontation, Erica Rosenberg for acting, her event was The Mouse That Saved the World, Tanya Martinez in review for puppet history, Jalen DeYoung, poetry for her original piece, The Heart, and public address, also public address, Dolly Parton commencement address. Thomas Roth for improvisation and after dinner speaking, Simple Plan for the Sissy Man. Individual events competitor, Jalen DeYoung, was also named an outstanding performer by her three judge panel and has been nominated to perform at the All-State Speech Festival Monday, March 27th. The festival is held at the University of Northern Iowa. The announcement of nominees was made last Monday. She will perform her original piece titled The Heart, a poem exploring the love of self and others. It's the third consecutive year she has received an all-state nomination in the same category with an original piece, which is an incredible feat in the world of speech. And as you may or may not know, speech for all-state has two categories, performing and non-performing. So you have to be selected to be a member of all, of the all-state group. And then to perform is another level beyond that. So congratulations to Jalen. The Iowa Vocal Jazz Championships will include Night Sounds next Tuesday at Spirit Lake. It's the 10th appearance for Night Sounds since the contest started in 2007 and recognizes them as one of the best, eight best Class II A jazz choirs in the state. And I'm happy to play for them and go over to Spirit Lake with them and play the Red Dalton John piano over there in the high school auditorium. That's pretty fun. And the following sixth grade students had their writing submissions accepted for publishing in the Northwest AEA Harvest Magazine. Ava Hinch for her piece Stone Age Cave Painting and Pastels. Kyler Maxwell for a Stone Age Hunting Cave Painting. Ricardo Uribe Perez for Stone Age Tooth Jewelry. Said Valenzio Goiz for American Indian Inuit Shelter. Shiloh Santos for Stone Age Headshot Cave Painting. Salvador Zapata for Stone Age Woolly Mammoth Cave Painting. John Leckban for Horse Cave Painting, Stone Age, which was Paint on Wood, and Damon Chepkes for American Woodlands Long House. So all of those different things will be published in the magazine and that's really fun that they get to participate in that each year. So we congratulate all of our, all of our students that were on the recognition of excellence this month.
All right, fantastic. A lot of great things happening again at Sibley O'Chedin. Moving on to item E, the IASB update. Thing that I want to remind everybody, IASB is having the first ever summit on student success. It's talking about the board's role in improving student learning. They are having that April 27th through the 28th. If anybody is interested, I know you've gotten contacts. I just wanted to remind everyone about that coming up. Item six.
Sorry, I was getting down.
Yep. Skip down the NASA trip. My computer is not wanting to perform very well. There we go. Item B, literacy presentation.
And Ms. Krogman is here to present for the mathematics department this month.
Hello. First, I would like to thank the board for their service and for allowing me to speak at the board meeting this evening. I know that this is often a thankless job, but we do appreciate you and the work that you do for our district. Since each department head has the privilege of presenting to the board once a year, I would like to take this opportunity to say that each department has its own responsibility to teach the content in the way that meets students' needs as well as state standards. I am not here tonight to compare the math department to any other curricular area. Rather, I am here to present how the math department is meeting the state requirements as well as the students' needs. This year, we started without a seventh and eighth grade math teacher. Mr. Weirzma and Mr. Toogee filled in as best they could with the seventh and eighth grade classes. Luckily, we were able to find a teacher who could start in January, Heather Ziman. And he has been doing a great job in positively impacting our district as a teacher and as a coach. When Cody Decriff was here, he had mentioned that the seventh grade curriculum was not the best curriculum that we had, but he was able to make it work just because of the math background that he had. This fall, due to having Mr. Weirzma and Mr. Toogee teach, we realized that we could not rely on the math background. So we upgraded our seventh grade curriculum to better fit the needs of the students. We now are using this curriculum and Mr. Ziman is also supplementing this with curriculum that he had as well. At the fifth and sixth grade level, we had a long-term sub, but things continued to run smoothly during Danielle's absence. Due to the curriculum that we have in the elementary and in the middle, or fifth and sixth grade, a few, or we purchased that a few years ago, it was easy for someone to step in as a substitute teacher. I know Matt Nag was the sub and he had a few questions, but he was able to ask Mr. DeZale or myself, or a couple of times where he came up and he said, can you please just explain this in a way that I can understand it? So that he could present it to the kids. But for the most part, he did a really great job filling in just with the curriculum that we have and how Danielle runs her room. And our elementary teachers are also enjoying the same curriculum. It really is fitting what we have for our, or what our students need right now. The high school is still maintaining our status quo. We will begin our ISAS testing in a couple of weeks. The only thing this year that has been a challenge is the snow days, which I'm sure you're well aware of. There isn't any, or that isn't anything that's preventable, but it does make it a little more difficult to have the flow with the days and the chapters. And sometimes you have to put a day in here because of where a test is going to end up. And then when speaking with Tyler and Danielle today, just as far as where we are, ISAS, we're about a week to two weeks behind maybe where we should be, where we were last year. But last year we had two snow days. And so hopefully that's one, and I told Danielle, I said, it'll be what it'll be. The kids will test how they're going to test and they might surprise you too. And then the last thing is I have talked to both Stan and Kent DeZale about the possibility of splitting the math curriculum position. And I don't know where we would go from there, but to a K-4 position and a 5-12 position is just because of the types of conversations that you can have amongst the teachers. I feel like this would be beneficial because the two areas that we report to the state are with reading and math. Literacy has already been split between the elementary and secondary levels. The math would be able to have different conversations at the K-4 level than what it, what at the 5-12 level due to the types of teaching that we have at these stages. So in the elementary building, it is contained. And so you have someone teaching, all three teachers are teaching math. As opposed to once you hit fifth grade, Danielle is just the math teacher. I don't want to say just a math teacher. She is the math teacher for fifth and sixth. Tyler is for seventh, eighth. Keith and I have high school. So it's different conversations that you can have. And when we have our group, our big group meetings, I know there's times where, when we've been talking, the 5-12 or the elementary is talking and 5-12 are, we, it's hard for us to comprehend that just because of the nature of it. When it's 5-12, then the elementary staff is looking at us like, oh, this doesn't pertain to us. So that would be the one thing, maybe something to think about or discuss for, with the TLC.
Any questions for Ms. Krogman? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate what you do for kids. All right, item C, Sibley O'Chedin Athletic Boosters proposal for athletic facility improvements.
So Travis and I have been, come on up Travis. Travis and I have been visiting and he's been sharing some ideas with me and wanted to share them with you as well. So, so he's here tonight to talk about what they're looking to do and, and just, yeah, take it away.
Yeah. Yeah, so this conversation started really a few months back as it came to the athletic boosters. And I, if you don't know who I am, Travis Tanaple, I'm the president right now of the Sibley O'Chedin Athletic Boosters. I have some of my other board members here as well. Conversation started with Daktronics on improving our facilities and specifically the facilities for athletics. We've, you know, had some requests come up for baseball as to, you know, different things we could do there. And the conversation went to the football field as far as Daktronics presenting a video board opportunity to us. We're not necessarily looking at this to improve athletics for next year or the year after that. It is a long-term outlook on it, more that five to 12-year timeframe. Where we were attracted to it is that it's, the video board opportunity is, is not just sponsorship and advertising generating revenue for the boosters. It is also, there's a curriculum base where the students can get involved to build out the video board pieces, whether it's stills, videos and Daktronics has that curriculum for them. So we like it as a way for the athletic boosters to, you know, generate more revenue for the athletics. We also liked it from the student involvement. We're, we're looking to have some of those larger capital improvements, whether it's lighting for the baseball field or just grounds improvements. We do have a sponsor meeting on March 28th at 5:00 PM, the high school auditorium. And I do have an invite for all of you here. I'd love to see your support at that. In talking with Jamie, as he mentioned, we thought right now it's, it's more of an introductory time to bring it up as a discussion with the school board as to how we see this project move forward. One, you know, we want the school board's support, absolutely. Two, we're going to need local businesses' support as well. So after next Tuesday, we're going to have a really good idea of how we move forward. But we are, you know, we've gone down the, the avenue of, of how, how the structure looks. We do see it best fit for the school to, to own this piece of property and essentially lease it back to the boosters for revenue rights. We will put in the work to have the advertising, the contracts, things like that done. The capital improvement funds to use it, the PEPAL save is where we see a natural fit for the initial money to come. And the boosters is looking at three to five years of replenishing those PEPAL funds for the initial cost of the video board. What questions do you have for me? And Jamie, if there's anything that I haven't touched on that we've discussed?
Well, I might, so you brought up the scoreboard at the football field. What, what do you see past that? Because we'd had some other conversations about, starting with that, going to other places. What else are you envisioning?
Yeah, so as the video board sits in here, I'll, I'll pass out these invitations so you can kind of see a visual of, of what we've got here. The, the existing scoreboard is fairly new and in, in good shape. Daktronics mentioned to get a different look than what they've got out there. We are using some of the interim pieces of that. We are also completely replacing the PA system. As you see the General's logo at the top, that is a speaker. And that is its own speaker for the entire complex. So what I would like to see as far as some of those capital improvement pieces down the line is one, a, a first stop would be improving the current baseball field scoreboard. Two, taking the PA system from the football field, moving that to the baseball field. So that's up to par and able to, you know, communicate to the crowd.
And I would, and I would tie into that, that the current sound system we have at the football field does its job, but it's not what it needs to be for the space that it's trying to cover. At the baseball field, it would be a natural fit and would do much better than the system we have over there currently. So it'd be a really nice way to repurpose without having to buy new.
And Daktronics does strongly recommend using the attached PA system, especially video and audio, having that match up. The existing PA system, as Jamie said, is in good order, but it causes a delay or an echo effect, so it doesn't match up with the audio. They gave us a couple of examples of schools that had done it that way and ended up going to audio attached.
And that's evident in when you use the, when you just use the PA to speak into, because there's a two-second delay from the microphone up in the press box to the speaker at the north end of the football field. It just takes time for that signal. So if you're never, the only time I've ever seen it used out on the field was, is parade of bands. Otherwise, somebody's in the press box and so they're shielded from that. If you're out in front of it, it's crazy difficult, but you won't run into that probably. And the sound system would be great. I mean, inside of those speakers, when you go to Iowa State or Iowa, the, you know, the speakers are all built into the scoreboard and one into the stadium. So it's, yeah, they'll sound great.
And, and Daktronics will have more of a presentation as far as, you know, everything that's entailed on, on Tuesday night. I can kind of scratch the surface a little bit. Because there are the permanent sponsor spots in the four corners. Those are the larger ones. Then there's three on each side that are smaller ones. So those would be permanent signage at all times. I do recommend the varsity football is the primary time to use a video board or varsity track. They are able to display all eight lanes for track and for bands. If there's a still or a video that they're wanting, they can use. Uh, if there's a still or a video that they're wanting, uh, they can use that for, for bands on the field as well. Um, trying to think, am I missing anything? Arthur, you've been involved in quite a few meetings too.
No, I think I covered quite a bit of it, Travis. Just like you say, wanna get the general information to you and make you aware of what, taking a look at and, and, uh, like I say, hopefully get some more information going forward here, the project moving.
Do you have a total cost estimate of what this would be?
Yeah, we're, we're still working through, we've got a couple of projections. Um, you know, initially, we were able to get, the video portion of this board is thirteen feet by twenty-five feet. And that's what they recommend for our seating area stadium. Um, we, at a similar cost, uh, if you were to compare it to Sheldon's, the score display is about a foot and a half shorter on the top and on the bottom. So that's repurposing our existing score pl- and that's why you're seeing a different sign, um, viewing if, you know, you were to look at the comparables of, of other ones. So we are able to get a bigger one at a similar cost. Um, the total, uh, for the video board, um, sound system, everything that as far as Daktronics is providing, is estimated around two hundred and seventy-five thousand. The installation cost, um, is where we haven't seen a final estimate. And we're working with local contractors, um, but, uh, yeah, nothing is final. We wanna see the sponsor's support on next week, Tuesday night, see where we're at for that. If this discussion turns into more of a formal proposal from the athletic boosters, that's where we'll know. And then we'll start finalizing these numbers and, you know, Daktronics also tells us if we order, you know, within a certain timeframe, the price is this. They can't guarantee it based off of how things are moving either, so. A good question.
So Travis, you mentioned, uh, school owning it. Is that your proposal that the school would buy the entire thing? And then how would that lease look to lease it back to the booster club? Or are we that far yet?
Yeah, it's a really good question. As, as far as, you know, the, um, the current signage that's on the football field, uh, was on a three-year contract with a, with a year extended, uh, as a COVID year. Um, so that's coming to a, to a s- sunset. Um, you know, as far as the lease, we would like to continue to, to show that revenue coming in as that does support the jersey rotation, uh, things like that. Um, but this, we would like to see this replace the current, uh, advertising, uh, just to have one display up there. Uh, some of the reasoning behind the school owning it, um, one is obviously initial capital. Uh, two is the insurance to put something like this up and have the boosters own it and then still at the end of the day re- leasing the property, um, from you or from the school district. Um, so in, in Daktronics, they're unaware of any scoreboards that have been owned by a private entity. We went down that road to see if it was a possibility and every, all roads pointed back to the, to the school owning it. Um, there was one other part of that question that I didn't answer.
No, just, uh, exactly what you were looking at. You, you answered the question.
I, I would say we'll have a lot more details when we start seeing, you know, numbers, pledges, contracts. Um, Daktronics does strongly recommend, you know, initial five-year contracts. So once we have those things secured, uh, we'll know a lot more where we're at financially as far as, you know, what will it take to purchase and install, get the key turned, so to speak? Um, and also, you know, what we would be looking at from that lease characteristic for the revenue and putting the work together to make this thing go.
And I would add to that, that the current arrangement that we have for the video board in the gym, it's the same idea. Um, Booster Club put up part of the money, the hospital put up part of the money, and then we own it. But then we have an agreement back with them as to how they're gonna be represented by it. So in this case, to have the revenue go to the booster club would be an agreement that where they're gonna, you know, however it ends up on our football field, they're gonna use it to raise money to support athletics. So, um, we have a, we have an agreement that was drawn up with the booster club, uh, for the video board. Um, it's not exactly the same because it's talking about us sharing revenue instead of, uh, them doing the, doing all of the stuff with it, but same concept.
Good. So you think you're gonna have, uh, installation ideas by, uh, numbers by Tuesday or?
I do not think we'll have the installation numbers by, by Tuesday as far as, uh, finalized. There's, there's some other pricing things that, um, Daktronics does not provide as part of the installation. One is a simple, um, explanation would be an electrician to finalize the wiring. Uh, it's one thing that's not provided. So there are some things that we still need to price out. There's some materials that we need that are not included. Um, I would think that based off of the sponsor meeting, depending on the response that we get, uh, and again, local contractor commitments, so we're not, uh, hiring companies from Minneapolis, Sioux Falls and Omaha to put this thing in. Uh, the initial quote that we got, it looks like that's a good spot where we could save quite a bit of money. Um, the booster club is prepared to have its own, some of its own capital to go down to reduce the initial cost as well. Um, so that, there's a little bit more to the equation that, uh, I'm assuming the business people got a similar invitation and similar explanation to what I've given so far. Um, they may not be prepared to make a commitment on Tuesday night. So we'll have to have some time to, to let those businesses get back to us and, you know, finalize their pledges or their commitments. Uh, we would want contracts in place before, you know, obviously before we would place an order or anything like that. Uh, but also school board approval if this is the route we, we go down ultimately.
And Travis has been great about communicating and, and I'm sure he'll continue to keep us in the loop of what's going on and, and, uh, I appreciate that. We've had some good conversations.
And I'm sorry Travis, I missed thirteen by what was the dimension?
The video display itself is roughly thirteen by twenty-five feet.
And what's the total size, size of the?
The total outlet? Yeah, so they have a recommended height that it starts at. I'm pretty sure that's just for, you know, kids jumping up and hitting it. Um,
It's thirty-six foot long.
Thirty, thirty-six foot wide, um.
You mean height like where the bottom is off of, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so they have a total, a total sign height, but I can't remember if that's ten or twelve feet off the ground, um, to start. But yeah, as, as scale, and that is scaled, it's thirty-six feet wide. So I would guess that it would be roughly about forty feet from the ground to the top of the sign. If I was to make a educated guess, they did give us the dimensions.
I was just thinking about the whole sign itself and what, what the dimen- but that's fine. You can find out Tuesday.
Yeah. Try to see if I can find it.
And have you had any interest from boosters yet or?
Any interest from, yeah, can you?
Community, boosters?
Businesses, maybe.
Businesses? Have you had any interest?
Yeah, we've gone through our entire booster membership. We wanted to make them a priority, uh, as, you know, options to, uh, attend the meeting. We have not had any, if, if this is what, we have not had any pledges or contracts, uh, in place yet. Um, and, and Daktronics has really taken the wheel on the meeting process. You know, they have us doing our, our local legwork.
So they're gonna be here Tuesday?
They are doing the presentation on Tuesday. Yes, yep. It'll essentially start with me doing an introduction and they, they will go from there.
Let him comment the initial feedback that we got is pretty good.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, uh, very many that have been opposed to it or, so.
And I would say as the past president, that it was probably a member initiated that even got us started thinking about this. So this isn't just something we came up with in January. We've been talking about this probably for a year and a half.
And I think some of that too is, is credit to, you know, what the previous board and, and the administration got done in the gym. Um, I have not heard anything negative there and that's really what led us to what's next. Um, how can we think a little bigger? How can we, um, have our organization work with the athletics of, of the Sibley O'Cheaton School District and, and really try to generate some more dollars for those student athletes? If there's no more questions, thank you guys for your time.
Appreciate you coming, presenting, all of you showing up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item D, redist- redistricting of director districts.
Okay, so after the twenty-twenty census, um, after the twenty-twenty census, well, I should say after each census, um, the, uh, the school districts and other municipalities and, and organizations have to go in and look at the population distribution within their boundaries. And you have to, um, figure out where your, uh, where your districts are and based on the population and the rules of how it all gets put together where your boundaries need to be. Okay, so in your packet here, the first two pages are the current districts. So, uh, District One is Laurel, District Two is Kyle, District Three is Jamie, District Four is Greg and District Five is Kristen. Okay, and you'll see in the bottom right-hand corner of the first page, um, Director District One had at, after the two thousand and ten census, had nine hundred and fifty-six uh, for a population and each district is listed there. And you'll notice that the numbers are fairly close together. They have to be within ten percent of the number that's created by taking the total population inside the school district and dividing by five. So the, the goal is to get each district equally represented with the number of people. There are other regulations that you have to follow though, um, such as you have to line up as closely to the voting precincts as possible. Um, and then that ten percent rule. So we go to a company, we're going with, um, her name is Jody Florrie and she's from Cornerstone Geo, um, Geo, shoot, thank you, Geospatial Consulting, there it is. And so she knows all of the rules, they're trained in how to do this and they have the, um, ability to create these graphics for us. Um, and plug in, um, all of the numbers. So they do the math, then they, um, then they create the, the districts. So an important thing to remember with this process is that by Iowa code, which sets out all the regulations to get this done, by Iowa code, you do not get to say, well, we'd like it here. It's where it falls under the regulations. So in two thousand and ten, it fell here. Um, the second page is just a close-up of, uh, District One, Two and Three specifically so that you can see, um, in town where Sibley is divided. Okay? Um, that's, those are the current districts. When you flip to the next page, you're gonna see both of these pictures on the same page, so there's only one page for each plan. So after the two thousand and twenty census, um, in the upper right-hand corner on proposed district, director district population, you can see the numbers that are up there. Total population forty-five, twenty-eight, divide that by five, the ideal director district is nine oh six. So you have to be ten percent away from nine oh six. And so all of those numbers are within ten percent, uh, which would be ninety point six people. So the changes, as you'll notice, District Four and District Five are nearly the same. But if you go to the smaller, uh, the, the, um, zoomed-in photo of Sibley, you'll notice that, um, District Five cuts further to the west, cutting, uh, cutting into Districts Two and Three. So what that does is it, is it changes your directors. Because District Three in this plan would not include east of the golf course. And that's where Jamie lives. So he would get kicked out of District Three and live in District Five where Kristen is the board member. So you would be looking to do something for the Director Three, or the District Three Director. On the next plate, on the next page, the thing we can do is go back to the consultant and say, all right, give me another option. Very generic, very sp- very unspecific, give me another option. And they'll redraw another option. So, um, they did that and if you'll notice, in the district population, District Two and Three were ve- are very much closer together and District Five, um, was reduced somewhat. So now your ideal director district size is really close, all things considered. If you look down at the blown-up map of District One, Two and Three and a portion of Five, you'll see that it extended out District Two to the east, but it still kept District Three, moved, uh, that, that eastern boundary moved, still stayed farther to the west. If you look at District, or Plan Three, District Two and Three moved back out to the east. District Two is out there and if you find District Three in the big part in the regular-sized map, you can see that it's now a square with that little, with that little jaunt into the middle of town. So what happens with that, District Two, you'll notice that the boundary on the northwest corner moved south. Well, Kyle lives up there and he would now be north of that border. So he would be in District Five and he would get kicked out of District Two. So regardless of how the, the plans come together, um, we can continue to ask for options and hope that we get one that still includes everybody. After three iterations through this, that's not looking like it's gonna be possible. We'll keep asking, but more than likely you're gonna have to do something. So in that case, um, we would talk about the dis- different plans. If you want me to, I will go back and ask for more options. If you're satisfied with these three options to discuss, we can just talk about these three. Then for the April board meeting, we would have a public hearing prior to the meeting to take input on the new director districts. Then you would vote to, um, consider, or you would consider approval of one of the new director district plans. And if that, as it looks like it may, um, if that results in the director districts changing, um, then you have an empty board seat to fill. And so I talked to, uh, Steve Avery, our lawyer today, just to get a heads up on what that process would be. Three, here it is.
There you go.
So once you approve a new plan, if you have an opening, then you have to appoint a new director within thirty days. You also have to provide legal notice to the patrons that you intend to fill the vacancy, identify the district that the vacancy is in, and then let people know that they can apply for the position within ten days. And they state why they're interested, what they will bring to the board, um, what issues they feel are facing public education, uh, what about the school district you are most proud of? Um, then the electors of the district, which would be just that section, whether it's two, one, two, three, four or five, uh, the electors have a right to file a petition for special election to fill the opening within fourteen days of the notice. Uh, the petition has to be signed by one hundred eligible voters of the district. So there's a, you have a responsibility to fill this, this spot. But the public als- has the option to put the petition together and ask for the special election. But it ha- you have to appoint somebody within thirty days. So if there isn't anybody that applies and is interested, and nobody files for special election. The person that you appoint will stay on the board through the end of the term. So the, where, if it's Jamie, he is midterm. But it goes to the next election, so they would not serve out the rest of the two and a half years. They would just be there till November, and then the and then you would have to, they, that seat would be on the election. If it's Kyle, he is up this time, so somebody would sit until November, and then a new director would come on. So that that part looks the same. If there is. If there is somebody that applies, or there is somebody that the petition is successfully filed. Then you still appoint somebody, but you have to, you have to do the election and and all of that stuff. So the appointment would be there until the election was done. But you have, you have thirty days to make the appointment. So hopefully, all of it would be done by the next board meeting, so that you could administer the oath, bring the new person on, and move forward.
What kind of deadline do we have to do this?
The plan has to be adopted by May fifteenth. It has to be sent to the Secretary of State by May fifteenth. So if you do have to decide on new director districts. It, I would recommend at the April Board meeting, we can still call a special meeting after that to continue to talk about it. But I have to send it to the Secretary of State by May fifteenth.
What questions do you have or? Or if you'd like me to go back and get more options?
So the three that they propose, all three of them, somebody is not in the right dis- right.
And Kyle, you said the same thing happened after the 2010 census.
Yeah.
So it's it's not unusual for this to happen, it just happens every ten years.
Yep.
It happened in two thousand as well.
What's that?
It happened in two thousand as well.
Yep.
Any questions, comments? I should add, I'm sorry, I should add that once we do get down to the options we're going to talk about. Then we'll send those out like we have the other things, because there's the public hearing, like we sent out the calendar and everything. We will send these out so people can see them and bring comment to the public hearing. I don't know that it's gonna do any good to go back and ask for more options.
Probably gonna have a similar result somewhere.
And I don't think I'm gonna move, and I doubt whether we could talk Jamie into moving to District Three, so those two options are.
In the next forty.
In the next, yeah. So I don't know that that's an option. He just built that house, too, I think. Yeah, I think he likes it, yeah.
Well, as as we move forward, if you have any questions, make sure you let me know. And. I guess, yeah, if if you if you don't want me to pursue other opportunities, I won't. If you do, I'll email and mail. So. The nice thing is I don't have any, we don't have anything to do with it. Right? They they come up with the plans, and they follow the laws, and you get to pick one, so.
All right, everybody on board with that? We'll move on to the FY twenty-two audit report. Kendra's gonna talk about that, then it's done already.
It's done, it's filed before the March thirty-first deadline, so it's been a few years since we had that, we had to file extensions. So I'm very pleased and thankful that that it's on time this year. Um, so there's a few handouts, the the audit report itself. This one is the news release that will go to the papers, I, they usually send it about a month later to go to the newspapers. It's just stating our total district revenues increased by three point four one percent from the previous year. And our expenditures overall for the whole district decreased four point three percent. And then it talks about the findings, which we'll talk about a little more in detail in just a minute. The findings included lack of segregation of duties, budget over expenditures, a variance in certified enrollment data. And an inactive student activity fund account, so we'll talk about those in in a minute here. And then the other, the other letter is just from the board about their, or it's just from, it's to the board from the auditors. So we'll just go over things quick on a few pages of the report. Page seven, it it has a few financial highlights. The district's total net position increased to eight million five hundred four thousand. Total revenues increased to eight, eleven million eight hundred fifty-three thousand. This is the whole, the whole district, all all funds. And then total expenditures decreased to ten, ten million five hundred sixty-nine thousand. Uh, which was a four point three percent decrease. Uh, the third tab there is just talking about general fund revenues and expenditures. So general fund revenues decreased to nine point two eight nine million. And expenditures increased to nine point two eight four million. So it's a point one two increase for the balance, the fund balance overall for the general fund. Um, if you wanna flip to page fifteen. It just highlights a few economic factors for the dis- on the bearing on the district's future, all things that we've talked about. Um, it is a concern of the dis- this district that certain costs continue to increase, such as those associated with negotiated agreements. Such as salaries and benefits. It is a concern of the district of possible declining enrollment in future years, which we've been talking about. And also that the legislature not only set allowable growth on a timely basi- basis, but that it's increases sufficiently. Those are just general things that are affecting the district. Um, the next thing I was gonna highlight is back on page forty-three. Um, forty-two and forty-three shows the categorical funds. This just shows the balance that we had carryover in our categoricals. Um, the largest one we have is limited English proficiency or or ELL. Um, there's a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars of carryover. Um, we've added a teacher, um, a separate high school teacher for that this year. So that will be a um, a little bit more expensive, but we generally have a large carryover in that. Um, gifted and talented programs, there is a thirteen thousand dollar carryover. Uh, most of that will be used up with salaries and very few supplies and things that they buy this year. Um, dropout prevention, eleven hundred forty-nine dollars, and that, um, that will be used up this year. Teacher salary supplement, one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. Um, that will also be used up, most of that is due to rounding and taxes at the end of the year. But that gets carried over and added into the new TSS amount. Um, successful progression for early readers, forty-nine thousand. We've spent a chunk of that this year, but we will have some carryover. And then professional development, we'll use quite a bit of that this year with the. Um, bonus in the, for the tier-three bonus on the contracts, but there will be some carryover. Um, yeah, and there, we're working on discussing options that we have to. In the next few years, we won't have much carryover in that area. Um, page fifty-eight. This is just, shows all of our activity fund accounts. Um, that we keep track of everything separately for, um, dance team and pep club and everything. So the, it shows the balance that they had at the beginning of the year, revenues, expenditures, and then the balance at the end of the year. So if there's specific ones, um, that you have questions on, feel free to ask. The next page fifty-nine, it's a ten-year, the last ten years, this is all of our funds put together. Um, the top section is revenue and where the revenue comes from, if it's local, state, or federal. And then the bottom part is instruct- or expenditures, and it splits it out into, um, instruction, support services, capital expenditures. And then long-term debt, um, our our debt service. So you can see the, there's pretty, pretty similar, there's a few fluctuations. The federal, the last two years, that that was the influx of S R funding the last, the last few years. Um, otherwise, there, things are generally pretty similar. Um, so the next page is six- page sixty-seven, and this is the findings that they, um, that I read at the, at the beginning in the news release. Um, the first one is segregation of duties. We al- we always have this one, um, we just don't have enough people to, um, have have things split out separately. And that I, we will continue to have that one. Uh, the next page, page sixty-eight, um. Farther down the page under part four, the, it's the certified budget. So the expenditures for the year exceeded the certified budget amounts in this instruction and other expenditures functional areas. So, um, next month, you'll approve the certified budget, and then for FY twenty-four. And then those are the amounts that we have to stay within for the, for the year. So this is, um, instruction was one that was over, and we were eighty dollars and five cents over. Um, a large part of that was the teacher retention payments, we were not planning on those, that came from the governor. Um, so that increased our expense quite a bit. We got the revenue for it as well, but this is just talking about our our expenditures for the year. And then the, the other one is in other, the other section, which is facilities, um, our debt, and then the AEA flow-through. Those, those three combined to the, um, the other section of the budget. And that was over, um, a hundred and one thousand, and the the reason for that was because of our revenue bond payment for the. And through debt service, we refinanced the bond. And, um, it was the timing, the timing of the payment. We used to pay them in, um, like, the first of July, and this was the, it it changed to come out of our account on like, the thirtieth of June. So it was just the timing of between fiscal years of how it came out of the bank. So that was on the budget part of things. Um, the next one is on the next page, um, on page sixty-nine, that twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two dash dash H. Is certified enrollment, and that says, we noted a varian- variance in the basic enrollment data certified to the Department of Education. The number of resident students reported was overstated by four students. So that was, one, one of the students had open enrolled to Sheldon. Um, in previous years, Sheldon, n- neither Sheldon nor us knew that they moved into the district. So we counted them and billed Sheldon for them, but they should have counted them as their own student instead of open enrolled, because the student actually moved into their district. Um, and the other three were high school students that, um, I think the timing, they ended up being, um, not continuing being dropouts. But the timing of things, we counted them thinking they were still coming and coming back, and they ended up not, not coming back. So those were the four students for that. And that gets taken off of our budget this year. The, um, enrollment this year gets, is, um, we have to deduct four students off of that on our FY twenty-four budget.
If I can add, Kendra, those three students were still on our roster after, or on October first, even though they had stopped attending prior to October first. So when we counted them and then got the question from the state, they said, well, it's the last date of attendance. Regardless of when they say they're dropping out or they're whatever, it goes retroactive back to their last day.
We attempted basically to keep them in school.
Right.
You don't, the first day they stop attending, you don't mark them as a dropout.
Right.
It's the easy, simple answer.
It just happened to be at count time, but.
Yeah.
So then the last one is on page seventy, that, um, two thousand twenty-two dash N, the Student Activity Fund. Um, in accordance with the chapter two ninety-eight A point eight of the Code of Iowa. Um, and I- Iowa Administrative Code, the purpose of the activity fund is to account for financial transactions related to the co-curric- co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Offered as a part of the education program for students. We noted during our audit, the district is maintaining a fax club account, which has not had activity for the past five years. So there's a three hundred dollar balance in fax club that has not been added to or used in the last five years. And, um, we th- we thought we had taken care of that during the year, but it it, um, it got missed. So that was on there, that, um, according to Iowa code, you have to, you have to use the funds or disperse them to other, um. Other clubs in the activity fund by board action, so we will, um, do that during the year this year. So that one shouldn't be on there next year. It's a lot of information, does anybody have questions that you can think of right now? If you read through the whole audit and have questions, let me know.
Nope, it didn't, looks like you did a good job.
Yeah, do the funds for these activity accounts, are these funds that these organizations raise on their own, or that's not like?
The activity fund is all either gate, gate money, um, or fundraising, or if there's a donation. Or if we charge a entrance fee to something.
Okay.
Um, there's no state funding for ac- you know, funding from outside sources for, um, activity fund. It's all concessions or fundraisers.
Gate, gate money at sporting events would go into sporting things here, or is that?
We use it for all things.
All things, okay.
Some of our, um, some thi- some things don't have revenue, you know.
Right.
Baseball and softball, for sh- for instance, don't have.
Right.
Revenue, so then, but they still have expenses, um, especially with umpires and things, plus anything that they need throughout the year. So the gate money that we do have from football, basketball, volleyball, goes to cover, cover all of that. The clubs are a little bit different. They, they fundraise themselves, and they have that money to use. If they don't have money, they don't generally spend, get to spend any, correct?
Let all of the clubs run their money through the district.
Yep, activity, yep.
Okay.
Any comments, questions? Looks like that's for our knowledge only, no action needed. Moving on to new business, um, receive initial.
Moving on to new business, um, receive initial negotiation proposal.
And Ms. Krogman is here again representing the Civilly O'Chedin Education Association.
Today, as we begin the bargaining process for the master contract, we are determined to maintain and enhance the bargaining relationship we have always had here at Civilly O'Chedin. We appreciate the cordial atmosphere and professional working relationship that has been established, it is with that in mind that we will present our current proposal. As we are aware, our district must strive to be competitive to attract and retain the best and brightest educators of all levels of experience to our district. From new teachers to experienced teachers, we want all to be compensated and make hiring and retention a top priority. We are mindful of this goal as we prepared our initial proposal based on the salary matrix for certified teachers for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. S O E A represents all certified educators within our district, we have taken this into consideration as we strive to clearly define and determine teacher salary. And benefit levels which fairly compensate all of our educational professionals. As always, we are determined to work collaborati- collaboratively with our administration and board to create a safe and comfortable environment. Where all are respected, supported, and encouraged to pursue and maintain the level of educational professionalism our students and families expect and deserve. We will continue in a spirit of collaboration as we recognize a shared interest and fiscal responsibility to come to a fair and timely agreement for the solvency and benefit of our students, district, and community. It is with that understanding that we are requesting an increase in the base salary for the supplemental pay schedule. As educators, coaches, and sponsors, we appreciate the work that the board and the association have done in the past several re- several years to make that schedule more competitive. This increase will continue to provide coaches and sponsors with increased compensation to make those demanding and time, time-consuming positions desirable. We also propose the addition of a tech streaming director position to be added to the supplemental schedule. The S O E A is also pursuing an increase in the base salary and individual salaries for all educators, as well as an increase in days to the contract for the high school guidance position. These items will represent a fair proposal for all educators, as well as recognizing the current condition of inflation, school board, school fund balances, and the competitive salary competition that exists. So, here are copies of our. Did you wanna take two for Jamie and Kent?
Yeah.
Do you want me to pass this down?
Yes, please. Unless you might not.
No, it's not, no.
It just depends on anything you can read, it's new. I can get you the copy, right?
And so if you take a look at our opening proposal, the salary tiers for certified teachers, increase a total of a two thousand two hundred dollars with an increase of a thousand dollars on the tiers. So then, the steps were at forty-two thousand, forty-five thousand, and forty-eight thousand, our proposal is to raise those to forty-three thousand, forty-six thousand, and forty-nine thousand. For your B A, B A plus fifteen, and M A, and then the remainder of that twenty-two hundred would be twelve hundred to the staff that are staying. Um, the additional days, like I said, the ten workdays for the guidance counselor in the high school, this was something that we had at one time, and then it was. When we had a big revolving door of the guidance counselors, and, um, it just, there was one year we had it, and one year it was no longer there, and with, uh. Um, with everything with registration and things like that, it'd be nice to bring that back. Um, the supplemental salary schedule, an increase of fifteen hundred dollars on that base, which would bring it to thirty-two thousand five hundred. With that, we would add the tech streaming director underneath the same percentages as what a head coach would be, and this would be for each semester. So, and that is to entice somebody that would want to do that, I know, uh, Mr. Beavers has done a lot with the streaming, and, um, he has worked very hard at that. And the insurance increase, uh, in just in communications with Mr. Craig, it was discussed that the school district will cover the insurance increase projected for this year for single and family plan. Uh, we appreciate the board's willingness to provide insurance at a competitive rate, so, that was our initial proposal.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Stick around here up there, okay.
Yeah, I was just going to sit, is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, next.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Well, we also appreciate the, uh, uh, collegiality we've had with the association and, and work, and myself working with Mr. Jacobson for the last several years, uh, as negotiators. And having a lot of, um, great conversations about, uh, where we should go as a district. Um, our proposal for, uh, the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, uh, would be a three percent increase, uh, for, uh, a full-time teacher. And including FICA and I P R's benefits, that amount is eighteen hundred eighteen dollars. Uh, the permissible items that are in, um, either in the master contractor and the work rules, we do not intend to discuss.
All right. Any comments or questions from the board on the, uh, is this an extra?
Yep.
Yes.
On the board's proposal, okay? Moving on to item C, consider approval of stocking opioid overdose medication on campus.
So, um, our nurse, Ashley Hench, is here, and thank you for waiting so patiently, um, so, um. The, uh, opi- op- uh, opioid epidemic, uh, is starting to head closer and closer to home, and in order to, uh, help prevent. Um, issues or be prepared for issues should they come up, uh, she has prepared a presentation she's gonna share with you, and so. Take it away.
Okay, um, for those of you who may not know who I am, I think you all do, I'm Ashley Hench, I'm the school nurse here. Um, I actually have been collecting information for the last couple months in regard to Narcan, um, and the opioid epidemic that's going on, um, in our country. Um, Mr. Craig actually sent me an email, um, a little over a month ago, maybe a little bit longer than that. Um, about some information that he had received from other superintendents, asked if I had heard anything, and I had said, well, I'm actually collecting some information, so. Um, we decided to go ahead and pursue this, um, so if you wanna go ahead and go to the first slide, um, I just have some general information initially. Um, about an opioid, um, opioids are a class of drugs that include heroin, synthetic opioids, and then a lot of prescription pain medications are considered opioids. Um, how they work is they interact with opioid receptors in the brain, causing the cells to release signals that change one's perception of pain, and they boost your feelings of pleasure. Um, so they help decrease, um, some of that pain, a lot of times that's their job, uh, prescription pain medications, things like that. Um, but on the plus, uh, they give you a little bit of a feeling of pleasure, um, to help mask that pain. They're used to control, like I said, pain in various situations, low doses of opioids may make one tired, that is a very common side of, side effect of many of these opioids. Um, but in higher doses, they can decrease heart rate and slow breathing, which can ultimately result in death. Um, that is another thing that they do, they work on the central nervous system, and that actually slows down your respirations, that's one thing that we monitor for. Um, in hospitals, when we give, um, some of these stronger opioids as medications, we monitor their respiratory drive and their heart rate, those types of things. Because those are very common side effects of those medications. Um, because one may want to feel the pressures that can be felt by taking an opioid, this makes these medications a higher risk for addiction and abuse, next slide, please. Why do we worry about opioids, um, drug over- overdoses, intentional and accidental, um, addiction, counterfeit pills, um, accidental ingestion. Um, by smaller children, or, um, somebody who may not know exactly what it is. Um, just some information, according to the C D C, the number of drug overdose deaths has increased by nearly thirty percent from nineteen to twenty, and quintupled since nineteen ninety-nine. So, uh, the numbers are definitely going up, um, so, uh, I have a few different links there, it just talks about opioid-involved death rates increasing by thirty-eight percent. Prescription opioid-involved death rates have increased by seventeen percent, heroin-involved death rates actually have decreased by seven percent. Um, but the synthetic opioid-involved deaths, um, excluding methadone, because methadone is a, it's considered an opioid, but it is an agonist. So what it does is actually helps treat, um, opioid, um, opioid dependence, um, so that's what that's used for. Um, so that's excluded in this, um, but that has increased by fifty-six percent, um, if you could click on just the bottom link for me, please, Mr. Craig. I just wanted to pull this one up here, um, and then scroll down just a smidge, um, to the map. If you look, this is from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, um, you can see, scroll down just a smidge, if you please, um, the increase. Um, so it just shows a little bit, um, and we can look at our state of Iowa, it's just showing whether or not, if you hover, yep, the increase in deaths. Um, percent changes, um, the deaths in two thousand nineteen that have been linked, could there have been some that maybe weren't reported? Yes, um, but we do have a very good to excellent reporting in the state of Iowa, um, if it's opioid, um, related. So, um, this is the death increases, as you can see, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, that things have gone up quite a bit, um, so, I'm good with that. All right, next slide, please, why, um. Also, um, we worry about these because medications bought through illegal drug trade can be laced with fentanyl, so, um, that is a big issue, that is becoming more and more common. Um, fentanyl is being made on the street, it is a synthetic opioid, and a lot of these medications that are being made, um, are. Maybe being sold as oxycodone, or vicodin, or something like that, but they also have fentanyl in them, oftentimes, the person who is ingesting these medications does not know that. Uh, so, if they are ingesting what they think is oxycodone, and there is fentanyl in that, that will just make the effects of the opioid that much more. Uh, fentanyl is a very powerful opioid, just small amounts can be lethal. It is in Iowa, not just the major metro arrows, areas, but also in small towns, um, if you would, please, just click on that first link. This just shows emergency room overdose admits in Iowa in twenty twenty-one, so if you look, it just shows you just a few different numbers, uh, by age group. So, um, that second one down there, if you look, um, our age group that we have in school here, the fifteen to twenty-four year, uh, thirty point five percent. So, those are some of our kids in school, the less than fourteen, obviously, we have those as well, that's a little bit lower, but if you look at that age group, thirty point five percent. So, that's a pretty big chunk, and if you look at that piece of the pie, um, it's the biggest one, so, I wanted to point that out, if you could go back to the PowerPoint, please. Uh, and then the second link on there, please, the unintentional and undetermined overdose deaths, um, if you look, this just gives you a little bit of information, and this. If you see the report number in the corner, it is a January twenty twenty-three report, so it's very recent. Um, sixty percent of these peoples that passed away had opioids listed as a cause of death, unintentional and under- undetermined overdose death. So, that means that either the person unintentionally overdosed on something, may, they may not have realized what it is, or it was undetermined whether or not they meant to take that much of the medication. If you look, opioids is at the top of that list, higher than methamphetamine, alcohol, and cocaine, so, and that's strictly, um, for Iowa. So, if you go back to the PowerPoint, please, next slide. Is this the problem here, um, I know we live in a rural area, and some people are naive to think that maybe we don't have these types of problems here because we're smaller. Um, I actually spoke with the O C L County Sheriff, Kevin Walmouth, for this information, his deputies carry Narcan, um, which I will get to a little bit more about that, that is a reversal drug for opioids. According to him, a few of his deputies have had to administer Narcan in our area, to people who have had the symptoms of an overdose. Uh, locally, for the overdose victims that they have seen, the most common age ranges that they have seen have been more in the twenty to thirty age group, but he has seen, obviously, at various ages, it does not discriminate by age. The majority of those that they have seen have overdosed, um, were accidental, uh, wherein the medication person ingested contained fentanyl without the person's knowledge. So, uh, he did comment that, as of right now, he would not consider it a local problem, but local law enforcement here are definitely starting to see more of this. So, I just wanted to give you that information as well. How can we help, uh, there are things that we can do in our community, um, our high schoolers are going to be graduating, they're going to be going out in the world, they're having exposure to a lot of things that. We don't know about, um, and a lot of people, educating our staff and students about the dangers of opioids and other drugs, um, is a big way that we can help. Um, I actually received a phone call a little over a week ago, uh, when I was actually working on this, preparing this, from Pam Juber with, uh, Public Health here in town. And she said that, um, which actually was timed quite right, um, she actually said that she was approached by the medical staff at O C L Regional Health. And they would like to come and speak to staff, students, things like that, at our facility in regards to the opioid epidem- epidemic and the use of Narcan. Um, I said, wow, this is great timing, because I'm actually working on a presentation for the board, I had mentioned, you know, they're welcome to come and speak to the board if they would like. Um, I think it was a little bit short notice, maybe, just for them to have things, um, but she said they are very, uh, passionate about this subject, and they would like to do that, so. Getting them to come and visit with our staff, as well as our students, uh, I think would be a great thing. In addition, there are a lot of posters, resources, I know that posters just kinda hang on the wall, but on occasion, sometimes. They are, are a great resource for somebody who may not be seeking out and be willing to talk to anybody, they can jot down a number, or take note of a website where they can go. There are a lot of great websites, uh, that you can go to, YourLifeIowa.org has some really fantastic information in regards to. Overdose addiction, alcohol, uh, suicide, bullying, just a ton of different things, it's a great website, so they have a lot, have a lot of good resources there. Um, another way we can help, being familiar with the signs and symptoms of an opioid-related drug overdose, so, a lot of those symptoms are being more fatigued. Um, limp body, um, slowed respirations, pinpoint, uh, pupils, those are some of the big symptoms that you look for in a person who has had an overdose. Um, so, training on, uh, for our staff on what to look for, when and who to call for help in those situations, uh, would be something that would be great. The Iowa Department of Health and Human Services has launched a new initiative to provide naloxone, uh, the opioid overdose reversal medications to Iowa organizations, businesses, and schools. So, this is where we're gonna talk about Narcan, Narcan is actually the brand name of the drug naloxone, so naloxone is actually the generic name of the medication. It rapidly reverses the effects of opioids by blocking those receptors, um, as we talked about in the beginning, the receptors that the opioids connect to in the brain. Uh, naloxone actually gets in the way of those receptors, it works very quickly, and for someone who is having an overdose, it, I, less than a minute, you can see a big change. So, um, the. It can be safely given to people of all ages, from infants to elderly adults, and a great benefit is, if you give naloxone to a person who has not taken an opioid. Say you see a person who has some of these symptoms, you're concerned, maybe they have overdosed, if you give them naloxone, it's not going to hurt them. If they have not taken an opioid, it is not going to hurt them, um, so that is a great benefit to this drug, I know a lot of people, if you give a medication, you're worried about, what if they have a reaction? What if they, you know, what if they shouldn't have had this medication, what is it gonna do, it's not going to hurt them, um, next slide, please. So, in this instance, the Narcan that we're talking about, it's a nasal spray, so there's many different routes that you can deliver this medication in the hospital, we use I V, um, injectable, things like that. Uh, but in this instance, it is a nasal spray, it will look pretty much exactly like that picture there. Um, and it can be given in one nostril, one spray, in an emergency situation until further medical help can arrive. Uh, in these instances, when you give Narcan, you do need to call medical help, because often the effects of the opioid medication will last longer than the effects of the Narcan, and they will need more doses of Narcan. Um, they will need medical support, obviously, if they're not breathing well, things like that, they will probably need oxygen and respiratory support until they can come back to normal. Um, I do have a YouTube video here, I'd like to just play just a little bit at the beginning, if that's okay, I just wanna show you how, this shows you how you give the medication, how simple it is. Um, I don't wanna play the whole thing, but if you could go back to the beginning, if I want you.
Hold on a second, I'll get the. Okay. Just the beginning?
Yeah, just scroll all, all the way back if you can, I thought I. Yeah, just scroll all the way back if you can. I thought I had it there, but I've watched it a couple times, so.
Kevin. Hey, can you hear me? Then check for signs of an overdose, unresponsive to touch or voice, breathing is slow, uneven, or has stopped. Snoring, gasping, or gurgling sounds, fingernails or lips are blue or purple. Administer Narcan nasal spray as quickly as possible if someone is unresponsive and an opioid overdose is suspected. Even when in doubt, because prolonged respiratory depression may result in damage to the central nervous system or even death. Lay the person on their back to receive a dose of Narcan nasal spray. Remove Narcan nasal spray from the box. Peel back the tab with a circle to open the Narcan nasal spray blister pack. Remove and review the printed quick start guide inside the package. Hold the Narcan nasal spray with your thumb on the bottom of the plunger and your first and middle fingers on either side of the nozzle. Do not press the plunger to test or prime the device. If you do, you will waste all or part of the dose of medication. Tilt the person's head back and provide support under the neck with your hand. Gently insert the tip of the nozzle into one nostril until your fingers on either side of the nozzle are against the person's nose. Press the plunger firmly to give the full dose of Narcan nasal spray. Remove the device from the nostril after giving the dose. After you have given this medication, seek emergency help right away. Narcan nasal spray is not a substitute for emergency medical care. Move the person on their side after giving Narcan nasal spray. If possible, put their hands under their head and bend their upper leg forward. This helps prevent the person from rolling onto their stomach. This is known as the recovery position. Continue to watch the person closely. If they do not wake up or respond to your voice or touch. Or if they do not seem to be breathing normally within two to three minutes, use a new Narcan nasal spray to give an additional dose in the other nostril. Acute opioid withdrawal symptoms may occur from use of Narcan nasal spray in patients who are opioid dependent. Symptoms include body aches, diarrhea, increased heart rate or tachycardia, fever, runny nose, sneezing. Goosebumps, also known as piloerection, sweating, yawning, nausea or vomiting, nervousness, restlessness or irritability. Shivering or trembling, abdominal cramps, weakness and increased blood pressure. When the emergency is over, put the Narcan nasal spray back in its box and throw it away in a place that is away from the reach of children. In addition to watching this video, please read the quick start guide that comes with Narcan nasal spray before using it. Talk to a healthcare professional if you.
So as you can see, very easy to give, uh, not complicated at all. So, um, if you wanna go back to the PowerPoint. Do you have questions about anything you saw in the video or?
I'll ask this response.
Um, I've seen it in less than a minute. So, uh, in the emergency room, obviously, we use IV and I've seen it very quick. But, uh, this nasal spray, like they said, you can repeat the dose within two to three minutes if you don't see a response. So. Uh, if you're not seeing, uh, increased response, increased respirations, if they're not waking up, you can actually give another dose. So.
Would it work if they actually stop breathing?
If they actually stop breathing, yes, you can still give it. Um, but obviously, if they stop breathing. Uh, you're gonna be worried about whether or not they have a pulse. Uh, so that kind of thing is gonna be what you're gonna be looking for. Because obviously, if you do not treat the respiratory depression and the respiratory, um, ceasing, then you will lose your pulse as well. So. But you can give that and then ensue CPR if you need to as well. So it is absorbed into the mucous membranes into the nose. So. So, uh, obviously, in this, they, uh, the state has passed, um, allowing schools to obtain and administer Narcan. It's funded through the State Opioid Response Grant. Health and Human Services is offering up to five free kits to eligible organizations. Businesses, schools, things like that. They're always all encouraging them to keep these things in place. There are certain criteria that must be met in order for us to get the kits. Uh, there's information, so on Health and Human Services. We have to obviously have a policy in place. We have to have, um, understanding and training given to the, the staff. That will know how to administer this medication and also understand the symptoms, what they're looking for, those kinds of things. Uh, in addition, we can request the kits from them. Obviously, we would need a signature from Mister Craig requesting what type of kit we need. There are two different types of Narcan that we can obtain. The one that I would look to obtain is the one that you see in this picture here. Um, and in addition to that, uh, it just says here that we need to understand it's obviously not any type of treatment for any time. It's not a substitution for any emergency medical care. That, that will need to be followed up on. And in addition to that, any doses that we give have to be reported to the state. So in this information, there's a way to do that. You have to email that, that kind of thing. And we never know who may be taking something that may cause a problem. So. What next? So if the board agrees, um, what I would do is move forward with policy proposal, um, and information in regards to that. For our school to obtain and stock doses of naloxone to be used by trained personnel in emergency situations. I will also work with our medical staff to arrange education for our staff and students on the dangers of opioids. In addition, coordinate and give training utilizing the state resources. They have certain training, like that video that you saw there is part of that. Uh, for those who are going to be trained in order to administer this medication. Um, and in addition, they will be trained on our specific policy and how things look for that. In addition to that, I will need, uh, to work with Mister Craig to obtain our free kits as they need a signature from the district. Any questions?
I saw on their expiration date, how long are they?
There is. Um, I actually asked Sheldon recently obtained Narcan. They do have a policy in place and they recently obtained the Narcan from the state. Uh, and their expiration was about two years. She said there's expired. She just got it in February, end of January, beginning of February. And it expires in five of twenty twenty-five. So, um, obviously, it's something we hope we never have to use. Yes, it does expire. That would be something that I would have to monitor expiration dates and things like that in regards to that. That would be part of my job. Um, but, and the state does have requirements, um, as far as how often you have to monitor it. Uh, it's a monthly monitor, not a big deal. I already check all of the defibrillators every month anyway. So, um, just another little thing that I can do with that.
So tonight, you would be, you would be directing Ashley and I to move forward with this. Um, develop the policy, make sure all things were in place, uh, because we have a board policy that addresses like inhalers and, and, um.
Stock epinephrine.
Epinephrine, the EpiPen, um, things like that. But there isn't something that addresses this and we'd need to add that.
We would add it to that or we would have to have a separate policy?
Uh, either, one or the other.
The stock epinephrine policy actually is pretty, uh, generic. And it basically just states that it's our policy that we will not stock epinephrine as a stock medication. Um, the inhaler one is actually bronchodilators is actually new to the state of Iowa. And they are actually looking to, um, they have actually opened and it has passed that, uh, schools are allowed to stock. Emergency bronchodilators, so basically an albuterol inhaler, uh, for somebody who may have some type of respiratory issue. Uh, may not have an inhaler with them or, um, they may not know that or have not been diagnosed and you can administer that. That is a separate thing from this. This is just strictly the naloxone Narcan that we're looking at.
Good information. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for presenting.
Thank you, Ashley. And I'll send a link to that presentation to both of you, so that. So that you don't have to keep touching pictures.
I have a question. Hoping we don't use the doses provided, but if additional are needed, do we purchase after that or do they?
So actually, um, in regards to the Narcan, there's a couple of different ways it can be done. We can request more kits from the state. And if they have them available, they will give them to us. It depends on obviously how good of a reception they get. Uh, right now, you can actually, in the state of Iowa, you can actually go to the pharmacy and you can get Narcan, uh, without a prescription. So you just have to say, you know, um, that they want it to be accessible for those who maybe have a family member who has a drug addiction. And they are concerned that, uh, there may be an issue. So you could actually go to the pharmacy today and say, I have a concern. I'd like to carry Narcan. And then they would give you a prescription. It would be basically in your name, but you don't need a physician's prescription for that. Um, so we could also go that route and just getting the district, um, medication from a pharmacy locally. There are some schools that have done that. Uh, so it just kinda depends on how we would want to go after that. Um, and it depends on, like I said, what the state has available. Considering they're giving out a lot of free Narcan kits, so.
Thank you, Ashley.
Alright. I would entertain a motion, um.
And we're, and again, this would just be to direct us to move forward with the process. I know the item says approving stocking the opioid medication, but we have to do the other stuff, uh, ahead of that.
I'll make a motion to, um, move forward in the procedure to stock Narcan.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh, to approve recommending to have, uh, school nurse. Our superintendent move forward with the process, ordering Narcan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. That motion carried. Alright, item D, consider approval of installing memorial bench.
We've had a request to install a bench at the softball field and, uh, this came through Mrs. Elser. She forwarded on to me. Uh, the board policy, um, uh, you, the board can accept gifts, grants and requests in the school district. Um, uh, when they will full, when they will further the interests of the district. And you can decide, uh, the board decides whether that is the case or not. Um, it, though, but they are approved by the board. Uh, and once it's been approved, then a board member superintendent can, can accept the gift. Um, once the gift, uh, is accepted, it becomes property of the school district. And the information was, um, attached for what it would look like. So I would recommend approving the installation of a memorial bench and concrete pad at the softball field.
Make a motion to approve this, um, donation.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the insta- installing memorial bench at the O'Chidon Softball Field. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carried. Consider approval of fireworks at the baseball game.
Uh, Friends of ESL Baseball has done this for several years and, uh, we, um, we have to consider it every year before they're going to do it. So I would recommend, uh, approving Friends of ESL Baseball to, uh, have their fireworks display again this summer.
I move to approve the fireworks baseball game.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the fireworks at the baseball game. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carried. Item F, consider approval of twenty-three twenty-four district calendar.
And Director Aaron, uh, had made the comments and me, um, and I, and so I'm bringing it up for you tonight also that. Um, he was wondering about building in, um, a plan for, um, inclement weather. Um, so that we don't, didn't, you know, we had the public hearing and had to go through that whole process this year. Um, it is an anomaly that we've had thirteen snow days. I haven't had, um. Uh, I know I've only been teaching in education for twenty-five years, but I don't remember back to when I was in school. That we ever had anything like that. In the past two years, or past three years, we've had, um, two days and one day. So, um, I'm, uh, I throw that out for your consideration. Um, if you wanna discuss that, we can add it to the calendar before we approve it. Um, and then if you have any other questions about the calendar, I'd be happy to take those.
Thoughts?
Comments?
What do you think? You're gonna have to call them.
Yeah, build them in, make easy choices.
I think the nice thing about built-in ones is everybody knows upfront. You know what's coming, if, if we would have to use them. People can kinda plan ahead and know. But where we build them in? Start looking at.
See, by building them in, the first ti- first ones you're gonna look at are those ones where people take that three-day weekend and they, they have something planned. If, if we're building them in, that eliminates that, um.
Is there something with presidents stay with the association?
Yes, it's in the work rules.
Yeah, so that's one that we wouldn't be able to use probably.
Not, well, you could have that conversation, but.
That was something bargained for.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to change the handbook to change the work rules in order to just do it.
I guess I'm kind of of the feeling, most of the time, you're not gonna need them. Let's cross the bridge when we come to it, if it ever happens again.
When you, when you think about it, we, we had to get, how far did we have to get before we ran out of hours? And then we've, unfortunately, we went half hour over the four days that we, that we landed on, but. I mean, that's pretty close. And in a year when there's, it, you're just not gonna see this.
Let's hope not.
You know, uh, 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 often.
Let it be that.
We'll hold you to that.
No, well, I'll find it. Give me a call on it.
Any other thoughts?
Seriously, you have any?
No. I mean, not beyond, cause yes, the days that we build in are ones we have to, we couldn't approve tonight anymore.
Right.
Right. Alright, then I would recommend approving the, um, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four district calendar as presented.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty-three twenty-four district calendar as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Motion carried. Consider approval of budget guarantee resolution.
So every year, um, declining enrollment sets off the budget guarantee. If you do not have, uh, declining enrollment, you don't go on the budget guarantee. But you do it anyway, just to be safe. Um, we are anticipating declining enrollment, so, um, we need to read the, uh, resolution. Um, that will levy property taxes to pay for the budget adjustment. So, um, there's a resolution that should be somewhere that needs to be read.
They've got it.
I resolve that the board of directors of Sibley County Community School District will levy property taxes for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. For the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under section two-five-seven-point-one-four Code of Iowa.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the budget guarantee resolution as read. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Motion carried. Consider approval of Odyssey Ware agreement.
So we have been using Odyssey Ware for credit recovery this past year. Mister Zeller's gonna provide a short update. And then, um, what we're looking at for next year and then we'll consider approval of the new proposal.
Can you bring up the attach?
I can. Stats first?
Do the other one first. I don't work backwards. I think it'll make more sense.
We rehearse this.
So the, the proposal of the, the, the cost next year, as you can see that I got from them, we don't have a hard one. Because we, we don't do it as a flat cost. We do it per student and we don't know that. And so in, is it in there or is it in the follow-up? Scroll down a little bit there, Mister Craig. You can s. You can see we have an email chain. Okay, right there it is. Um, last year, which is this year. Um, last year, which is this year, she's referring to, is two hundred and fifty dollars per license, that means per course. And then they would put that up two seventy-five for next year, okay, and then I, I didn't include it in here, responded that, we don't know that, so. Yes, that's going up per course, okay, so you can go, oh, okay, what does that mean for us, so? If we go back to the stats, prior to this year, our credit recovery courses, if you remember in the past, were coordinated through NCC, yes, we gave them here. But NCC actually ran the program and we paid NCC, we did not pay Edge Annuity slash, um, Imagine Learning slash Odyssey Ware. Because they've been consolidated and bought out, so whichever one you wanted to call it at the time, we didn't pay them directly, we used that vendor, but it was through NCC. Okay, like many. Many high schools do, we'll put it that way. Um, the problem with that is once we got going, it's okay, but we had less control, sometimes with the unique things, then you have to call and ask NCC to adjust it. The biggest issue we had is starting each semester or the year, getting kids enrolled and then their kids that have failed something, maybe don't make the best use of their time. And by the time you're talking to them and maybe they're in a meeting, so they're not responding to you, it could be four, five days into the semester before they start that. That's not great, they're here in school with five days of nothing to do to start a semester, especially after the Christmas one was probably worse, okay? So those were some of the factors that we said, can we do this ourselves, cause we're doing all the work. So rather than paying the flat fee, also along with that. Some of our processes that we talked about last year and in the student handbook that we changed. Um, that if they failed the, uh, course, they technically, if the parents requested after one time, could go right into credit recovery, that wasn't the intent, but if you read the parts. So we changed that they have to fail a course twice before they can go into it, so they can't fail just the first semester or something like that, we've made those changes. Um, among other things, so we requested to work with them directly, we don't go through NCC anymore. The cost last year, I don't remember what it was exactly per student, but we have the total cost, which. Where is that, do you have that up there?
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy-three is what we paid last school year. For this school year, we're at twelve thousand seven fifty. I put subject to change only because I don't anticipate that going up, up a lot, but if we had someone that suddenly needed to enroll in this last quarter here for. If they finished a course and they can get the second half done, that could go up, so you'd add two hundred and fifty bucks. What is it gonna happen, maybe three times, maybe zero, so that's gonna be, so you can see, even though our costs went up per course, it went down. The reason we, overall cost went down is because some of our processes and better control that we have of the system. So even though it's up per course, the overall cost is down, um, and we're still feeling the effect of that, so I would anticipate. Um, next year it's gonna be similar, could be up, could be down slightly, it just depends. So for an example, this year, let's say you take a course, so, uh, math is the only exception to this because math, they don't move on to the next semester if they fail. Because that really builds, but pretty much every other course we've changed that they continue on, especially in the core ones, so if you failed English for a semester. Science, your social studies, those courses you move on to the second semester, cause it's not like if, um. I didn't pass the test over the war of eighteen, twelve in the first semester, I can't take the test on World War One as an example, right, I could still do that. So they continue on, so in order to be in credit reco- recovery, they have to fail both semesters. So I think we're gonna have a little bit more this year where some kids now in the past who didn't take the class second semester are and could pass it. And then starting next fall, we'll go back in with the regular teacher, cause they've only failed it once now, pass the course. And hey, now they're caught up and they never took credit recovery, but we don't know that till the end of this year, right? Okay, there will be some, because of timings, we already know will take that next year just because of when they failed it in multiple times, so. It's hard, that's why I say it's hard to know the exact number, but I think overall that's keeping our costs down and it's been a much better process with the chaos. Of what we had going on last year and the number of kids in it, and if you, yup, shaking his head, yeah. Walk through, there's a few periods where we, just because of scheduling, we're more than others, but overall, it's much more controlled. The person Jenny Palmerinky that runs it under with Amy and, um, Amy Elser and Jillian Klingenberg. You know, if there's an issue, we can deal with it right away now, like, oh, this quiz didn't open, we don't have to wait two days for NCC to open it up again because of a mistake. Jenny can probably get it done in about five minutes, that was the problem before. We couldn't reopen that if there was an issue, or, oh, she got in the wrong course, I gotta put her in this course, okay, how many days is that gonna take? Well, they can probably get it done in an hour now. So those, those are some of the benefits, yes, increased cost per course, but overall, it's been a much better product experience. We have more control of it, Jenny's able to tighten that down and kids have said, you know, this would've been better just to pass the first time, which is the intent. Right, ultimately, so, um, it, it's been, not that we can't continue to improve, we are, we've had discussions on that actually recently. On just little tweaks that we see, once you go through it, the first time yourself and figuring that out, and I think we'll continue to do that, but. Um, I would say anyone involved with it, running it says it's gone way better than it has the last few years.
I'm certainly not a proponent of this, but do any schools charge the families back for credit recovery?
No, and the reason why is you can't.
Okay. Like I said, I'm not a proponent, I was just curious.
I recommend approving the agreement.
How often do we have?
What's that?
Can I ask a question now?
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
How often do we have a student, um, do we have, I mean, do you have any data on that fail twice before they?
Well, that just changed this year.
How often do they fail twice, so for this year, as an example, I think this is maybe what you're getting at, for the current school year. First semester, we had twenty-two students.
Yeah.
That took a credit recovery course, but two of them took two courses, which is why there's twenty-four courses were the first semester. And then the second semester, we, um, we only had seventeen in there. And twenty-five total courses taken, now, the other thing that we can do with this program too, we have a few situations where due to, I didn't mention this, but scheduling conflicts. It was impossible for a few kids to take a course, okay, the primary example that I can come up with is health. That by their senior year, we still couldn't get that in, so they, they can do that through this and it's not credit recovery, it's not like it's, they can take it for credit to replace that. There wouldn't be many other courses where that would happen with, but there's a few situations. Um, I could think of two students, we had, they had a full plate their freshman year, so they didn't take it, and not everyone does most take it. Their sophomore year, it didn't work out, their junior year, there's no time to take it. They were gonna do it this year and then the periods it was offered, it didn't work, so they took it through this program as an example. So how many kids failed that, I, I would go back to that, that's hard to know, from year to year, in the past, it was up, cause not everyone failed it twice before they tried to take it.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to can you, continue using Odyssey Ware and approve the per class price of two seventy-five for twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-four.
Okay, okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Odyssey Ware agreement as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Item I, consider approval of AEA purchasing agreement.
Kendra has copies that she'll, uh, pass out to.
I handed them out to you.
Oh, you already did, perfect, um, so we do this every year, um, and, uh. Uh, it's a great agreement that, um, is financially a great option, so, um, I recommend approving the agreement.
There be a motion?
I move to approve the AEA purchasing agreement.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the AEA purchasing agreement, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Consider approval of change to April regular board meeting date.
So, uh, we already have moved the, uh, or set the public hearing for the certified budget for Tuesday, April eleventh. So traditionally, we move the regular board meeting to April eleventh as well, uh, we just didn't do that last month. So I'm recommending moving the April board meeting to Tuesday, April eleventh at five thirty-one PM in the high school library.
Make a motion to move the April board meeting to Tuesday, April eleventh at five thirty-one PM, second.
It's been moved and seconded to change the April regular board meeting to Tuesday, April eleventh at five thirty-one, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same, motion carried. Consider approval of sharing agreement librarian.
So we share Lisa Lodi with Harris Lake Park, um, we have sixty percent, Harris Lake Park has forty percent. It's not an operational sharing position, so we do not receive additional students, um, but both districts are interested in continuing the agreement. And I recommend approving the sharing agreement with Harris Lake Park.
I'll make a motion to approve the sharing agreement for the librarian with Harris Lake Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded to approve the sharing agreement of our librarian with Harris Lake Park, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Um, there were no item L, so we'll move down to item M, consider approval of resignations.
We have two this month, A.J. Whalen from his boys' basketball coaching contract and Emma Osseland is fifth through eighth grade interventionist. Uh, that position is paid, uh, through Esther Funding and, uh, we are, after discussion with the administrative team, we are not looking to replace that position just as a. Um, but, uh, I recommend approving the resignations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resignations as stated, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same, motion carried. Consider approval of new contracts.
We have four, Tristan Bramer for agriculture education for next year, uh, Matt Nag for middle school special education for next year. Um, and then Hallie Pepe and Tyler Ziman as volunteer high school track coaches for the current season, I recommend approving the new contracts.
Any pending certification or anything?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the new contracts, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the new contracts as presented, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Consider appro- approval of board policies.
There's a note on this one, you're gonna wanna stick around.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, the policy committee got together, um, and reviewed the policies listed here, there's, uh, two, so tonight. Um, uh, we're presenting them to consider approval of them as reviewed, they were reviewed, no changes moving forward. Um, there are two policies, however, that we need to, uh, take a look at, um, as it relates to the sunshine laws. And I've contacted Shabon at IASB to figure out what to do with them, it's two-ten-point-five and two-ten-point-five R-one. Specifically speaks to how the agendas are posted and how we used to do business. So we need to change that language to include, uh, something similar to posting on an exterior-facing window. Um, and so we will bring that up again, um, as a policy revised, um, next month, I, I asked Kristen and Laurel already. And they, um, they said they were fine with advancing that to the board for consideration, so we'll bring that up in April. Uh, but for tonight, all of the policies listed are reviewed with no changes and I recommend approving the first reading and waiving the second reading of these reviewed policies.
I move to consider approval of board policies reviewed, do I need a list of them?
Do I need to list them all? Sure.
Yeah, why not?
Sure, why not? Twenty point two, two hundred point two, two oh two point one, two oh two point two, two oh five, two oh six point three, two oh seven. Two oh eight, two oh eight one E one, two oh nine point one, two oh nine point two, two oh nine, two oh nine point three, two oh nine point four, two oh nine point five. Two oh nine point six, two oh nine point seven, two-ten-point-two, two-ten-point-three, two-ten-point-four, two-ten-point-five R. Two-ten-point-seven, two-ten-point-seven R-one, two-ten-point-nine, two-fourteen, two-fifteen, point one E one. Two-sixteen-point-one, two-sixteen-point-three, two-seventeen, three-hundred, four-hundred, six-oh-two-point-two, six-oh-two-point-three, six-oh-five-point-one, six-oh-five-point-three.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the board policies as Greg read. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same, motion carried. All right, additional items, next meeting.
There is a typo, it's May fifteenth instead of May sixteenth for the regular board meeting. Um, but now both the certified budget hearing and the regu- regular April board meeting will be April eleventh, uh, based on your board action earlier tonight.
All right, talking points.
Well, Ashley gave, I think, the best, had the best prepared audiovisual presentation in my four years here. With links and it was all, it was all put together, I mean, that was phenomenal and very.
Important information.
Important information that. Yes. Any other talking points?
Do you have on the budget? Yes?
The audit?
Audit, I mean, excuse me, yup.
Yup. Good literacy presentation on mathematics and we had good recognition on our we- winter sports, beach and jazz.
Great things happening. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carried, we are adjourned, thank you very much.